Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the zoning board of adjustment. As your host for the evening, allow me to introduce us, allow us to introduce ourselves. It's a group meeting. To my far left.
Gaspal Bimba.
Richard Tripp.
Crystal Morin, Secretary.
Lynn Perkins, the Chair.
Donald Burgess, Member.
Jim Dietzel.
And to our far right, we have our new Code Enforcement Officer, Carrie Owen. Welcome in to your first full night here with us, Mrs. Owen. And our clerk, Lucy Peoples, is in the back taking notes and minutes. We would advise you that these proceedings are audio/video recorded and scheduled to end at 10:00 P.M. If you would shut off any cell phones, iPhones, any electronic gadgets that would create a distraction to the proceedings, I would appreciate that. And if there's nothing else to announce, we will proceed with our first case for the evening, which will be brief. Mr. Preventure, do we have Mr. Corbett out there?
Mr. Chair, I'm not seeing Member Corbett at this time.
All right, very good. Mr. Corbett has a statement regarding our first case. And in this matter, Mr. Tripp, Mrs. Morin, Mr. Burgess. I'm sorry, Mr. Tripp, hold off. Mr. Dietzel. We had musical chairs on this first case that were going to have a request for rehearing. Mr. Tripp, you have precedent here. Mr. Dietzel made the vote on this case. Do you mind if he decides on this rehearing? Or would you like? You were here for part one.
I know, I was here for part one. I missed part two, but more importantly, I missed the vote.
Okay.
So I believe that I should step aside.
You'll yield to Mr. Dietzel. All right, very good. Mr. Dietzel will ask for your vote on this request for rehearing.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp.
In the first case, which of the evening is case number 25-125. This is a request for rehearing from Bird Enterprises. And the address is 187 Hampstead Road. Request for rehearing is presented by James Foley, 178 Hampstead Road. Mr. Foley has submitted a formal letter outlining his concerns about the board's vote. And asking and bringing forward some concerns of protocol as well as process, which is all that this board actually reviews on a request for rehearing. Essentially, did we misstep? Did we make any errors in judgment or process? I'll open the floor. Mr. Burgess or Mr. Dietzel, you can start. Any thoughts there? Do you see anything new that would consider you to want to rehear this case?
Mr. Chair, I do not. I don't see any additional information that we didn't have when we made our vote. And I see no procedural errors made by this board.
Okay. Mr. Burgess, your thoughts there?
I tend to agree with them, but I still think that we took all the case as it was.
Okay. Mrs. Morin?
Chair, I also agree with what Mr. Dietzel has stated.
Okay. I have a letter from Mr. Corbett on this matter. I'll read it for the record. It says, "Chair Perkins, in the event that my service fails on Thursday, I wanted to formally send my response to have for the record. I've read Mr. Foley's rehearing requests, and I do believe that the board erred when voting no. A board member must state their reason for evidenced by the five-point criteria. However, affirmative vote does not require the same." And I will just point out, Mr. Foley's complaint is that in the affirmative votes, Mr. Corbett, myself, and Mrs. Morin did not give our reasons for supporting the vote. And that is typical. It has been by statute that the courts and the legislature required, when there's a no vote, that we have to justify out of the five criteria why we voted no. Mr. Corbett's point is that I think on one of the two no votes, Mr. Dietzel or Mr. Burgess, I'm not sure which, he felt that perhaps you did not justify that vote, that no vote on the affirmative for the Bird Enterprises. There was, he continues on, "There was numerous back-and-forth communication with both the applicant and the abuders throughout the two-night hearings surrounding the five criteria. I do not agree with the assertion that Mr. Perkins and Ms. Morin never spoke to these." I would concur on that. We did hit on a lot of points in those two evenings. And in that regard, I will say that I don't see any new information here that would warrant rehearing this case. We considered a lot of information and reviewed a lot of information and heard rebuttals on both sides. So in that regards, I would concur with Mr. Corbett as well and align with Mrs. Morin as well. So in that case, if either of you or Ms. Morin have any other comments?
I do not.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Tripp? You wish to add anything here if you see any errors or anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Mrs. Morin, you have a motion to read?
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-125 for James Foley to grant the request for rehearing for the June 19, 2025 decision by the Town of Dairy Zoning Board of Adjustments, ZBA, granting the request for a variance to allow the installation of a 59-square-foot pylon sign, which will include a 15-square-foot electronic messaging sign, parcel ID 10012, zoned LMDR, as presented with the following conditions. There is one stated that one subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. And that concludes the reading of the motion.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Very good. Mr. Burgess has a second. That puts that motion on the floor. Following that, let me read in for finding a fact. Request for rehearing was presented by James Foley, 178 Hampstead Road. The application is in the LMDR district. The application was for signage and electronic messaging board. It was noted that the sign provided a public service to youth as well as service to a business. Are there any other notes that any of the voting members would like to add on the finding of fact? Being nothing there. And that will conclude the finding of fact. Therefore, we can move for a vote. All those in favor of a vote on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Mr. Dietzel? Your yea says that you wish to have the rehear-
No, I was voting on.
Very good, thank you.
I'm voting no on the rehearing.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Burgess?
I'm voting no also.
All right. Mrs. Morin?
Chair, I'm voting no as well.
All right. I will make that a number four. And as well as Mr. Orbit's statement is on the record. Therefore, the board makes that unanimous as a no on the rehearing to Mr. Foley. Recourse for Mr. Foley would be to Superior Court and to file that at that within 30 days. If you needed any direction on the matter, Code Enforcement can assist you with that as to your rights. All right. Thank you. Your Honor is probably out of line, Mr. Foley, but making sure that the community is well-served, please do.
Mr. Chair, if we could have proximity to the microphone for all those in the audience.
By the way, this is unusual protocol, but I'm going to give you the latitude.
I appreciate that, but it is the basis of the hearing and getting something on the record in regards to this. There's not a lot of direction within the zoning board regulations. So the requirement of hearing of a meeting, notice of a hearing, has to be something.
Not sure I follow you?
Well, we received no notice of this hearing.
Well, and you don't. You submitted it. It's not a hearing. It is a rehearing request. And so the board keeps its criteria in this very limited, as you have the right to appeal. So therefore, anything from the record that has already been established, the certified record, which you have the rights to attain through the Code Enforcement Office in your pursuit of appealing this to the next court, this board typically won't incriminate itself and does not have a rehearing, does not have a hearing and a rehearing request. The board can take this up or are able to take it up within 30 days, but that's the limits. And as I've said to you, this is out of the norm.
I'm just asking for record from this board that it is your opinion that there is no notice required for this hearing.
There is no notice required for this hearing?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, next case up, case 25-117, Richard and Margaret Bowdoin. This was tabled from June 19, 2025. Mr. and Mrs. Bowdoin for the Joint Revocable Trust. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, hi.
And would you like to introduce yourselves?
Peggy Bowdoin, Sixtieth Street, Dairy, New Hampshire. And I'm her daughter, Anne Moussou, of Gosstown, New Hampshire.
Okay, very good.
Excuse me, could they speak a little more into the mic?
Have you speak right into the microphone?
Sure.
Okay. Almost have to yell for those that have soft-spoken voices.
Okay.
So Mrs. Bowdoin, Senior?
Yes.
Margaret, correct. Now, were you here with your husband the last time?
Yes, we were here.
And he can't join us this evening?
Oh, no, he's here. He's here.
So who's going to present on this matter?
I will present on this.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Sure. Anne Moussou of Gosstown, New Hampshire.
Did I speak over her, Mrs. Peoples? Okay, so in this regard, we typically want a, someone, the owner, to sign off for representation. Okay? So, Mrs. Margaret Bowdoin, you give permission for your daughter to speak on your behalf?
I absolutely do, yes.
Is that good enough for the board?
Good for me.
Yes.
All right, very good. Please proceed, folks.
So you want me to read through the questions that were, okay.
Yeah, so what we ask for is the application as it is presented to be read for the record.
Okay.
And then we'll give you some latitude and we'll answer any questions for you.
Okay. This variance will not be contrary to public interest because the shed will be located completely on the applicant's fenced-in property. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the shed will be located completely on the applicant's fenced-in property. Substantial justice is done because, due to the size of the applicant's lot, the shed needs to be located within the zoning restriction. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished because the shed will be located completely on the applicant's fenced-in property. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in an unnecessary hardship. For the purposes of this subparagraph, unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, not fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that division to the property. Due to the size of the applicant's lot, the shed needs to be located within the zoning restrictions, which is the 35 feet from the front line, 15 feet from the side or rear lot lines. That's done. Proposed use is a reasonable one. The shed will be used to store outdoor equipment and furniture. If the criteria in subparagraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and then a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. Due to the size of the applicant's property, sorry, the applicant's lot, the shed needs to be located within the zoning restriction.
Did that wrap it up for you?
Yep.
Okay. Would you like to give us a little extra narrative about what's going on here? I think it's outside of the forms that the state-
Yeah, so their lot is fairly small, right? And right now, they currently have a temporary pop-up tent or pop-up garage that they are storing their equipment in. They're really, because of where their house and the garage is located, there's really only one spot to put the shed without putting it right in the middle of their lot. So they wanted to put it behind their garage, kind of tucked in, which there's not enough land to allow the 15-feet spacing for the shed. Years ago, they did have a shed there, but it was run down and taken down. So they'd like to put something else there.
It's a 20-foot wide garage, I think it shows?
Yes, something like that.
I prefer at least 24 feet wide for two cars.
We do too.
And 20 is a bonus, right, if you have one car, but 20 doesn't fit two cars?
No.
Chances are, if you have a lawn chair, you hook it on a nail in the garage, and somebody bumps it, falls down on the car, right? All right.
It's an old garage.
Well, hopefully, it's not going to collapse, right?
No, no.
How big is the lot?
50 by 90.
Okay. All right, well, let me open it up to the board. By the way, Mr. Obimba, would you sit on this case for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any questions from the board? Mr. Burgess, is this in your neighborhood?
This is right around the corner from where I live, yeah.
Any thoughts here?
I find no problem with this. It's a typical shed. It's got, on a small plot of land. It was similar to what I would have had when I was back in Lawrence, when I had my little 50 by 90. So, yeah, you don't have much room. So I don't find any problems with this one.
One of the older parts of the neighborhood, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Heck, yeah. My building is 1900.
1910, I think.
Yeah, I'm in 1900, exactly. That's my building in Lawrence, on High Street.
Oh, okay. Oh, is it? Just down the road.
When the railroad is still shuffling milk from Dairy Boston, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Enough of the nostalgia.
The chickens one way and the milk the other way.
Mr. Dietzel, anything?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Obimba?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Tripp or Mrs. Morin?
I have a question.
You may ask that question.
The shed you said is going to be eight foot by six foot?
Eight foot by eight.
Eight by eight? Oh. Oh, all right, you're right, because it's six feet off the property line.
Correct.
Do you know how far the garage is off the property line?
It's right on the property line.
It's right on the property line. All right, that's the-
It's like the Wild West.
Well, when there are no rules, you don't have to follow them.
There you go.
There were no rules back then.
Since there were no rules, you know, there's a-
Well, actually, on mine, I, there were three or four pieces of property together. And the guy across the street was a doctor. He owned that house. And he owned the one in the corner. Then he owned my property and the house next to it. So he owned all the pieces in the one in the corner down on Everett Street. On, yeah, Moore Street. But anyways, right on the corner. So he owned all the property, so he didn't care. He put them in. Gave them to his nieces and nephews and sons and daughters.
Yeah, well, I agree with you. I don't believe that there was any zoning until, what, the '70s, early '70s?
I think so.
And if your house was, if your lot was 50 by 90, the limit on your house was then 50 by 90.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So we're seeing that the shed is six feet off property line. And they're balancing the shed in the space behind the garage to the property line, two and a half feet each side.
Yep.
Same reasonable to you?
It does.
Okay.
It's a-
Mrs. Morin, you all set?
I am, thank you.
All right. By any chance, was it more advantageous to attach the shed to the back of the garage?
Well, we could, but we had problems with our garage floor, and they had installed geolocks. So we need room for them to come and tighten them periodically. They check them. So we have to have two feet.
Got it. Okay. All right, good enough. You folks have anything to add that we haven't covered yet?
No, I have one question, though.
Yeah?
Do we get a permit from you, if we come, if we get variance? Do we get the permit from you, or how do we get a permit? We've never done this before.
No, this nice lady all the way over my far right, she's going to give you the permit.
Okay.
But you have to pass go with us first.
Okay.
I do have a letter here from Mr. Cahill, and he stated that he wished to speak in favor of the case below. And I'm sorry, that's the wrong case.
Okay, I didn't know any DLS.
I'm sure he doesn't have an objection to this either, because he lives all the way over on Island Pond.
Okay.
So we're going to make a call to public, see if anybody's out there that wishes to speak in favor or oppose. Any comments that are made, you have an opportunity to rebut. We have a phone number there. Mr. and Mrs. Morin, can you read that phone number off of the record?
I can. You can call 646-558-8656. Meeting ID 323-909-140.
All right, very good. If you are remote and wish to speak on this matter or any other matter before this board this evening, those are the phone numbers for you to call in. Please press star nine, and the producer will get you in. I'm going to make a call for anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application. This would be your opportunity to come forward. And likewise, simultaneously, as I see no one rushing forward, anybody opposed to this application, this would be your opportunity to speak and have your thoughts heard. Anybody out there, Mr. Preventure?
Seeing none rise online, Mr. Chair.
Need to add that if they have technical difficulty, phone number, just to have it on record?
Sure.
And if you are having any technical difficulties, you can call 603-845-5585.
Good, thank you, Mrs. Preventure. Mrs. Morin? Mr. Preventure, how many people are online right now? Can you see that?
Yes, we have a small handful. I'd say five.
All right, very good, thank you. Anybody in here wish to speak on this case? Seeing no one come forward, folks, are you all set? You made your case? All right, good enough. Mr. Burgess, you want to take us into deliberative, please?
Yes.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure. Yes, you can.
Just for curiosity's sake, you said there was a shed on a property before?
Many years ago, yeah, we had shed.
And do you know where-
Right where we're going to put this shed.
Excuse me, I have to ask you a question before you talk. So do you know where that was located?
Right behind the garage where we went with the shed.
Basically where the shed is.
Correct.
All right, well, thank you.
All set, Mr. Tripp?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Mr. Burgess, could you continue on, please?
Yes, move that we go into deliberative session.
Thank you. Could I have a second, Mr. Obimba?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All in favor of deliberative, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Anybody wish to lead the discussion?
I see no problem with this at all.
All right, I think we covered all the points. We see a balance in the space behind, and we see no opposition to this. And obviously, it's a tight lot, creating a hardship for these folks to have adequate storage. If the garage were 24 by 30, I could say, well, they have enough storage, but they don't. So in this case, I think that covers the discussions on this of subject to all town, state permits and inspections. And anything else, any conditions anybody wishes to add on this motion? Seeing no gestures, motion come out of deliberative, please?
Make the motion to come out.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. I have a second from someone, please. Mr. Tripp?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor of coming out of deliberative, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Mrs. Morin, you have a motion to read.
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-117 for Richard and Margaret Bowdoin to grant a variance to the terms of Article 6, Section 165-45.1.b. Dot 1 dot d dot i i of the Town of Dairy Zoning Ordinance to allow the construction of an eight-foot-by-eight-foot shed less than 15 feet from the side and rear property lines. Parcel ID 29066, zoned MHDR2, as presented with the following conditions. We have one. One, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second, please.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Obimba seconds that finding of fact for case number 25-117. The board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application, incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions. The board found that the application is for a shed too close to the rear and side setbacks. The application is in the MHDR2 district, and the shed will be installed where a shed had previously been years before. Any additions to the finding of fact? Seeing no gestures there. All in favor of moving this vote, this motion for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Tripp?
I vote yes.
Mr. Burgess?
I'll vote yes.
Mr. Obimba?
I'll vote yes.
Mrs. Morin?
Chair, I vote yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. So folks who've been granted the opportunity for a permit, we usually tell you, anybody agreed by this decision, it's 30 days to ask this board for rehearing, which means if you set your shed up, within 30 days, somebody gets aggravated, they can ask this board for reconsideration, okay? Very good. Congratulations. Have a good evening. Mrs. Owen, I'm sorry, I skimmed so fast, I didn't call on you there. I'm sure you had a lot to reveal on this whole shit, so bear with us. I'll give you an opportunity to chime in. Next case is 25-118, Tupper Properties LLC. And good evening. Refresh my memory of your name, sir.
Good evening, sir. My name's Chris Sweniarzki, representing Tupper Properties.
Forgive me if I butcher your last name. You were here before for an ADU, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The governor has just signed a bill, give granting legislation. Do you wish to utilize that and confer with your clients, table this for another night? Or you want to proceed with this?
Well, that's a good point, because that was signed literally yesterday.
Yep.
However, is it the board's preference that we do it that way?
It is not. You're asking, Mrs. Owen, this application is slightly different, correct? This prior was an ADU. This is a two-bedroom, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that gives you the yield to come forward for a second shot, right? And, but your ADU is specifically different. Are the, what's the criteria on the ADU specifically? Is it 800 square feet max?
For the Town of Dairy, yes, as it stands right now.
You speak in microphone?
It's all right. You didn't get whacked on the nose, so you feel fortunate.
So as it stands right now in the Town of Dairy, it's 800 square feet attached. Legislation is changing that since when signed. However, the way that our ordinance is defining accessory dwelling unit is that it's a residential living unit within or attached to a single-family dwelling. And this, from my understanding, is a commercial property, a commercial district.
Okay.
Right, and that was something that I mentioned in the application as well. By your definitions of accessory dwelling unit, as you said, it has to be accessory to a dwelling unit, and we are not a dwelling unit.
So you wish to proceed?
We will proceed.
So just so your understanding, because I know that there was some concerns prior about accommodations, right? We ask for certain protocols, because historically, this board has been instructed through generations now, since zoning board was invented, that we, this board is kind of trained in a certain way, which is that we ask- which is that we ask for the application to be read in its entirety and then presented, and we'll give you all kinds of latitude to speak after that. Is that all right with you?
Okay, so if I understand correctly, you'd like me to address the variance criteria first and then add anything?
Yeah, your application as it's presented, we prefer to have it as on the record, and then you have all kinds of latitude and you can speak to it how you'd like.
Okay, fair enough.
And I did, Mr.
There we go.
Dietzel, would you sit on this one, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dugani, I'll have you on the next one, all righty?
Okay.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Many cases.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to give one background statement so we understand what we're talking about with this criteria, we have a commercial property and we would like to utilize the basement space for an apartment. Our belief is that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it creates no safety concerns, no traffic concerns. It has absolutely no draw on municipal resources. In fact, the fire marshal has reviewed the application and has only noted that it has to meet life safety codes, which of course it does, and we agree that it does, and it would. The spirit of the ordinance, of the ordinance would also be observed because we are not changing the commercial use that is there presently today. The street facing first floor of the property currently hosts two commercial businesses that are thriving. And my clients, since taking ownership of the property, have done some pretty significant improvements to the appearance of the property. I just drove by it a couple of hours ago and it looks quite good. Substantial justice will be done because denying the variance really has no public benefit. There's, there's nothing that the public gains by denying this variance because there is no impact. Conversely, on the applicant, what that results in is simply denying the applicant to use space that it has in a building. In terms of property values, they, they will not be diminished because this apartment, it's not visible to anybody. And again, as stated, it has no impact on the neighborhood in terms of traffic, safety, or any municipal resources. So with that, it's actually more likely that property values would be increased because property values are generally created by a comparable analysis of other similarly situated properties. Here we have many of those on this area of Crystal Ave. When the value of one goes up, the value of all of them go up by comparable analysis. And literal enforcement of the ordinance in this case creates a hardship that is unreasonable. This is only one of many similar properties in the area that does not have residential use. The tax map that I submitted with this application shows that all of the other residential buildings in the area that now have a mixed use, well, that all of them do except this one. This is literally the only one that doesn't have it. So that, that's critical because that's what makes it unique and that's what results in the hardship. You know, this area generally had many residential buildings that have over time become commercial but have retained some sort of mixed residential use. And again, I pointed out on the tax map I submitted, every single other one in this immediate vicinity does it. This is the only one that doesn't, so we'd like to conform with the rest of the neighborhood. For those reasons, I do think we meet the variance criteria very squarely. In terms of background, or did you want me to give the board an opportunity to ask questions about the criteria first?
No, I'd like you to read that application for the record, which is really what I wanted you to do right from the beginning.
The entire narrative that I submitted?
I'm sorry?
You want me to read the entire narrative that I submitted?
The page, this is application for variance, right there.
Okay.
That's what we want read for the record. That's our protocol. That way this board can follow you and give you a fair and partial hearing.
Okay, so those are the four criteria that I just read.
Okay.
You want me to read like the name of the applicant, the mailing address, all those things?
No, go ahead. With the.
So in terms of the, the background, you know, the similar application came before this board. It was filed in January. And the primary reason that the board rejected it was that the board stated that it felt we did not attempt to market the property commercially for a sufficient time. So we took that indication to mean that that's what the board wanted to see, and we placed it with a commercial real estate broker the next day. In the almost six months since posting, we've had, as of the filing of this application, 160-something views of the application online, only one inquiry and zero showing. And the professional opinion of our real estate broker, which is attached in here, is that it's not viable as a commercial property. So really, the background here is that without allowing it to be used as a apartment or accessory dwelling unit, however you want to fashion that, it really results in a, in a waste of the space.
Okay. You have anything else you want to elaborate on?
Nope, that's it, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Okay. So in your hardship discussion, you're, what you're bringing forward, from what I'm hearing, is that your hardship is that you're comparing it to other properties that have similar uses. That is that they have a commercial use or office kind of use, specifically, I guess, more to the left of your client's property, where there's a residence in the property. Is that what you're defining your hardship as?
Well, the hardship is the fact that we are the only one. So we're the unique one that doesn't have that use in an area where everyone else does.
But isn't the hardship the, the thing that prevents you from using the parcel to its fullest extent, not excessive, but reasonable?
I, I think it's clearly not reasonable in this case where all of the other criteria are very clearly satisfied and that it doesn't create a problem, which is evident by the fact that every other similar property does it. So I, determining reasonableness is subjective. In my mind, I, I think it's not reasonable for those reasons. Every other property does it without issue and this has no impact. So, so I, I don't think it's reasonable to literally enforce that. But reasonableness is not a black or white issue.
I have one thing on that. On this map, you don't have every spot marked off as having residential use. Do you have an updated map, then?
Uh, the Xs.
Correct, that's not every one.
Well, it's, it's every one that has a residential property on it.
Right, but you had said every property next to it has a residential option, and that's, doesn't seem correct.
No, what I said was all of the similarly situated properties, because this area has many residential structures, even though it's in a commercial zone, that were likely developed prior. Every single one of those has the use that we're asking for.
All right, well, I just wanted, for the record, that, make sure that you know that they don't all have some sort of residential use.
No, no, it's not every single property in the area. It's every single property that is like this one. And by like this one, I mean the properties that are really obviously a residential building that had been converted to commercial and mixed use over time. Certainly not every single property.
Okay.
I think one of the abutting properties is technically a school from a little leg that shuts out.
Yep.
But I'd like to go back to your hardship discussion. You work, you, you could have a use variance or you could have, you know, not just use like as in, you know, putting a commercial enterprise in a residential area, but also being able to utilize the property to its fullest extent because of a geographic constraint, right? You got a hill, you got a boulder, you got septic system somewhere. That often creates the idea of relief. But your argument that other properties have this mixed use, so therefore it creates a hardship on you, I don't, I still don't see the argument that that creates the hardship.
Well, topography is not the only way to create a hardship. It is one way. But you could characterize this by finding that, in fact, that rear property does have an issue with the topography, which makes it unsuitable for commercial use. That is the reality because it's in the back and it's lower, significantly lower. It's not visible and visibility is a key component in today's market for commercial use. So that is an additional reason why we would have a hardship.
But isn't the, the idea that, you know, I think in the last time that you were here, and I, and I will caution the board as well as myself, that we're going to focus on the merits here. But the idea that, that you couldn't get any other use for this, but your client had just purchased this property and they purchased it knowing and understanding with, with the idea that they didn't buy it, they didn't buy this property and say, we're going to try and get a rental property, but if we can't, we're just going to open up a limousine service. They bought this with the intent of buying a limousine service, but they understood the constraints or should have of the property in this, in this zone, in this district. Isn't that, isn't that reasonable?
Uh, yeah, but that's never a reason to deny a variance. Otherwise, there's no variance that could ever be granted.
But the state requires every 10 years that towns update their master plan. And their master plan helps develop what the zoning criteria is. The zoning criteria is supposed to follow the idea of the master plan.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so at what point do, do people, when the town says, we, we, our destination is to go over there and somebody says, no, I'm going to buy this property here and I'm not, and I don't want to follow those rules. Who has precedent in this regard?
Well, I don't know that I see it that way because we are following those rules. I mean, we're promoting and we enhanced the commercial business on the property significantly. So we're not asking for a use variance to disregard what the master plan calls for. We, we are doing that regardless. This is simply an addition, whereas without this variance, there's nothing that can happen with that because we, we don't have any commercial interest. So we're, we're not asking to take a commercial property and use it exclusively for residential, as you were describing. That was never my client's intent. But their intent in buying was always to create a dwelling unit in the basement because it, it really is perfect for it and it works in the neighborhood with all the other properties doing it. So while I do understand, you know, we, we want to use the master plan as a, as a guiding document and a tool, I think we're doing that quite perfectly, really, because we have enhanced the commercial use of the property.
I think what I recall is that the, and I think you've reiterated that again, it's reminded me of this, which is, you know, we're, we're going to do this, but we're going to also add X to it and see if we can get that. X being the, the residential aspect of this, correct?
Well, nothing was added. I mean, the basement's there, but it's, it's utilizing.
Yeah, they didn't do an addition. I understand that.
Yeah, no, they, they'd like to utilize the basement space, sure.
And in regards to the other properties that are adjacent to this, I think the majority of them are across the street that have this mixed use, not so much on this side, on, on the side that you're on, although I guess there are some peppered properties that have the mixed residential and commercial space to them. The majority of them are across the road and they're, they're essentially non-conforming at this point. So if they're abandoned, that, they, that use can be eliminated. My point to this is that you're comparing the hardship here with these other properties, but this, this board has had record, not that that's precedent by statute, but it's been on record that we have voted against other properties that are trying to do this same kind of thing. And they've prospered, but often the geography of the property can be an inspiration to that success or not. Am I, am I correct? I mean, you can take that argument both ways, that these other properties have them, but we've also voted other properties not to have them.
Yeah, and I don't know the history of all of the other properties. I don't know if some of them have variances or not. But in terms of, of the statute and how that is to be interpreted from dozens of court decisions, we're, we're talking about, the words our court used, the character of the locality. Across the street is the locality. It's in the same zone, the, the same types of buildings. So I don't know that the, the street crossing makes that much of a difference in the rational analysis. Now, if the zone line was going down the middle of the street, well, that might be a different story. But here, I, I would say, and, and our position would be that the other side of the street is the locality. I mean, that's the area. And that's why this particular property is so much similar to those other properties across the street. And again, there is at least one on this side of the street as well. I don't know the history of how that use came to be in the, I, I think you all knew, knew the property. It's an insurance agency. I, I don't know if that was by variance or pre-existing or what. I don't know. I don't know that the, as you said, there isn't a, a precedential value anyway, so I don't know that it really matters. But what, what matters under our variance law is you, you take something that varies from the ordinance and what our law basically, when you read it, is saying, does it fit and is not allowing it a hardship? So that's really the two questions. I, I think it very much fits because, again, there's so many other ones doing it. And the hardship is quite simple. They don't get that use of the property and it becomes a useless basement, otherwise.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
No, I'll yield to Mr. Burgess.
Through these times that we've spoken previously to you and another gentleman, as I recall, he had said that over the 50 years, this has been in, in business Omar, that there have been many commercial uses for that basement portion.
Long time ago.
Not long time ago because recently there was something in there also, as I recall. He said there was an art gallery. Other times, and in those times, it would seem that those would have been more improbable at that time because of the location. In this time and age, where a lot of thing is done online, okay? That you don't even, you don't, it's like an office in a house. You never have anybody come out to your house. You just, you know, they call you up, you go do a job and you're done. And then you go back to your office again. So, see, I don't see, and, and every time I'm watching through this one, it says that a property has historically been used for businesses. Okay, so I just, I don't see where it would be highly improbable to not have a commercial.
Well, and that was.
Use of that property.
And, and that was listed in the previous decision, and that's why we marketed it to show that there was no interest in this property. We marketed it at a very low price. I think it was $1,200 or $1,500.
$1,500 bucks is the one I saw, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's a very low price and there was zero interest. So, you, you know, regardless of what may have happened in the past, and, and I would assume everyone on this board knows that commercial real estate was a completely different world five years ago than it is today. But regardless of what has happened in the past, I mean, the, the, the proof is in the numbers. I mean, we can, we can leave it on the market for five years, whatever. We are not getting any interest in that property and we've put it at a very, very low rate. So I, I think that, that tells you that it's not viable for any commercial use. On the flip side, our expert tells us that priced accordingly as a, as a residential apartment, it would probably be signed up within days. And this would be the kind of housing that everyone still is looking for. It's lower priced. It's a place to live that people can afford rather than a place to live that only wealthy or older established people can afford. So it's, if, if anything, it's kind of a good thing for the community. And it's just one apart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How much parking is behind there?
I can look at the plan. I know there's.
I walked by it, but I couldn't really tell.
In the back, I don't know, but let me turn to the plan and maybe I can answer the question. In the back, um, I don't know, but let me turn to the plan and maybe I can answer the question better. And I don't know that it's striped back there.
You can go very back of your book, Mr. Diesel, you'll find this plan, the very last page segment, all the way to the back of the presentation booklet.
And the reason I'm asking is I'm trying to picture a business back there and how feasible would be to have parking.
Well, they got the parking in the front also.
So, yeah, I understand.
In the back, I mean, for, for the actual apartment, the, the proposed parking would be on the side. If you, you see where that, do you have the plan up?
Yeah.
Do you see the, like the number four? That's two spaces right there. In the actual back for a business, there is, I mean, I'm not going to say you couldn't fit a car, but it's not really practical. And it's maybe one or two spots there as well. So it's, you know, it's, it's not great for commercial. I mean, people used it in the past. I'm not going to say they didn't. They weren't businesses that were sort of high dollar businesses, as I recall. Just small little shop type businesses. Failing to remember what they were, but they were, they were kind of businesses that don't really exist today.
Typing schools?
I mean, I don't know if that was it, but that type of thing, yeah.
Somebody mentioned like an art gallery, somebody made art or something of that nature. So it wasn't like a store per se.
It wasn't a store, yeah. And I think one was like developing photographs or something like that. Things that, you know, we, we kind of don't really have today.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm all set.
Yep, Mr. Trip.
I believe you mentioned that this is really not in a request for a successfully dwelling unit. It's a, it's a change in use request.
Well, we're not changing the use. We, we're.
But you're adding residential to.
We're, we're adding.
To this use.
Yeah.
All right, so, uh, so I guess my question is, since, you know, if, if you look at the section 120, 165, 31, 1, it, it does not speak to residential at all. You know, we're.
I'm sorry, residential, what was the word?
It doesn't speak to residential at all in this section. No, I'm sorry. I, I, I sometimes say A W L instead of A L L.
I have bad hearing.
I sometimes say golf instead of golf. You know.
Like in Caddishak?
Yeah, but, uh, so I'm, I'm just wondering, since there are no requirements that define residential use in section 125, 32. Now, if there are any requirements that, uh, should be included, because, because of the added use, you know, and I think maybe, uh, the, uh, the code enforcement person could speak to that.
You wish to go over to code enforcement now?
Well, I think eventually we should ask about that. Because if, if we're going to ask, if we're going to add, make it a, a use variance, you know, there should be some rules that dictate.
I think that makes sense.
You know, the use, the use on this property.
Yeah, and what, what I could say as a minimum is that the different use has different code requirements, I'm sure, at the building level, and we do have to meet those. Variance can't get you out of those.
Yeah.
And that's what.
Can I get you lean closer?
Oh, sorry. And so the different use has different code requirements and, and that we do have to meet those no matter what. That's not a, a variance we're asking for or one that we could ask for. And, and that's what the fire marshal was saying, that we do have to meet all the life safety requirements.
But like Mr. Diesel, he asked, you know, you know, how many parking spaces are there? Now, and I'm pretty sure that that's probably in a residential code, so.
Yeah, actually that is one of the, the state laws that passed a little bit earlier. And the requirement now is a max, the, the town can't require more than 1.5. I don't know what dairy purports to require, but we have two for a two bedroom apartment, which I'm quite sure satisfies the requirements. But, but I, I mean, I'm happy to take any input from code enforcement as well.
Well, and, and before we go that way, we'll come back to your, uh, pretty soon, Ms. Owen. But I, I want to get back focused on, you know, we kind of lose our point, which is, you know, we get into life safety, but we're putting the cart before the horse, so to speak. I think it's reasonable and we ran into this the last time on your prior application, which was that we get bogged down into life safety, which isn't really this board's purview. And it's not something that we want to really get into. I mean, you can have, if this board found its way to give an approval for this, to have living habitable space on the lower level, this could be people walking. They don't, they don't need to have a vehicle. But it's kind of like we're putting that cart before the horse. And I think we also get lost in the argument of this space is there. We just purchased this, so we want to disregard and call it a hardship. We want to disregard what the rules were or what the intent of that zone was. So I want to caution that on the sides of the questions that have come about and make sure that the board stays focused on what is being requested here and not so much the life safety, though I can appreciate the fire marshal and that you have done due diligence and had the fire marshal involved here. But just because the fire marshal says, oh yeah, we, we would have to inspect and, and we would have to make sure that that's there, that doesn't erase the five criteria.
Sure.
Substantial justice hardship, so on and so forth.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, sincere apologies for interrupting the proceeding. We have had, experienced a catastrophic, uh, technical difficulty as of about three minutes ago. We could request five minutes to attempt to resolve that issue.
Do you need five minutes?
Yeah.
If, if, if we could have that, that would.
If that's what you need, that's fine. We'll table for five minutes. You appreciate having the official record, being able to fall back on.
I think we're recessing that table.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Trip. So we'll take a motion, uh, take five minute recess.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think we can go out.
Okay.
All right, so we, uh, back and I take it that whatever I don't see here is not what people, other people are seeing.
Correct.
We have a mark. Okay. All right. Anybody remember where we were at?
I, I think we were sort of, uh, talking about the hardship component. And as we were in the break, I thought about it a little bit and I thought it might be helpful to kind of parse through the exact requirement from the application and, and talk about it that way. And maybe we can come to some consensus. If that makes sense.
Let me see, did any of the members of the board have any questions to this point?
Not at this time, sir.
Mr. Trip, you all set?
Yeah.
And you gentlemen, to the, his left, you all set? All right, so if, uh, if you like Attorney Swinjarzki, why don't you proceed? It's, it's your presentation, so I'll let you lead. Uh, I think I was, may have been discussing the aspects of, um, the parking and the fire marshal and not getting lost in the weeds on the inability to use this, this space as its justification. I think that went to Mr. Diesel. So to that point, it's your time, so.
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, we, we have a definition of unnecessary hardship right in the criteria from state law, which is restated in your application. So the first component is no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. So when we're talking about use restrictions, the general public purposes there are always going to be twofold. The first is to promote specific uses because the, like the master plan has specific uses in mind. And the second part of that is to prevent incompatible land uses from clashing with each other. In this case, I, I think we satisfy that quite well because we, we are retaining the, the use that the ordinance and the master plan seeks to promote. We're retaining the commercial use. In fact, we've enhanced it quite a bit. In terms of incompatible uses, we're, we're not proposing, proposing an incompatible use because again, as we've said several times now, that use is, uh, in play in virtually all the other similar properties. So I think we, we really squarely hit the nail on the head there. And then you get to the second part of that, which is a little easier on the next page, is whether or not the proposed use is a reasonable one. And again, we, we have the use throughout the neighborhood, so it's hard to say it's not. So I think when you really parse out the exact legal definition of what constitutes the unnecessary hardship, man, I think we're right there. Like it doesn't, it doesn't fit better than that very often.
Any follow-up from the board? All right. Anything else, Attorney Swinarzki?
That's all I have. I'm still happy to answer any questions, though.
Okay. All right, well, um, let's hop on over to code enforcement and, uh, Mrs. Owen. And I think Mr. Trip may have something after your commentary to ask specific, but go ahead and give us your input here if you'd like.
Sure. Um, it's nothing that hasn't been previously stated this evening, but it is, as we are aware, zoned, uh, general commercial district. Residential is not permitted in that zone. And except if it's a pre-existing, um, single family property. The other properties that currently house living units in this area are pre-existed, pre-existing and considered non-conforming. And most recently, as we are aware, the lower level of this building, this commercial property did have a commercial business in its space, and I think it has in the past history prior to that as well. And kind of what Mr. Trip was alluding to pre, previously, if the board chooses to approve this variance, then it is subject to the current building codes. And at that point in time, that's when we'll get really involved in the review process along with the fire marshal for life safety and egress safety. As well as permitting and inspections.
All right. Well, thank you. Mr. Trip, did you get your question answered with that?
So is there a, somewhere in this that it says what the pre-existing residential, uh, conditions for, uh, code enforcement are?
So if it's pre-existing, non-conforming, and it is abandoned or no longer in use for one year or more, then it kind of loses that pre-existing, non-conforming classification?
You follow that, Mr. Trip? Abandonment after a year, uh, essentially erases the non-conforming allowed use.
Well, as the applicant has stated, uh, there's numerous properties that have pre-existing, non-conforming residential.
Right.
Usage. So are there any code regulations that apply to those pre-existing, non-conforming?
What would trigger our review processes if there were renovations taking place or a permit was applied for, or if there was a sale of the property? Other than that, if it's currently active as a living space or a commercial property, it can remain active as that.
So there are some conditions that would, uh, trigger a, a review of the property?
Correct.
Would this be a case where those, that trigger would be met and you would have to, uh, review?
Correct. So regardless of how it is zoned, so if it is remaining commercial, any renovations that would be taking place in that would require a permit and inspections from both the building and the fire department. If it, the, the variance is granted this evening, same thing would occur. It would require inspections from both departments, um, as well as permit applications.
So, so, uh, are the inspections for commercial different than residential?
They have different building codes, so different standards to kind of abide by. But, uh, inspections are generally performed by the inspectors we have on staff. Same process. We go out and re-review exactly what we're looking for, depending on what, what step they're, and, uh, where they're at in construction.
So should the board tonight approve the request for, uh, residential use on this property? We would have to put that in the.
Well, we currently cover that now with the, uh, following all permits and, uh, inspections. To the question, just to expedite, uh, between, uh, your questions to Ms. Owen, the, uh, there is the International Residential Code, which is two-family. I don't know how this falls. Did you have to do TRC for this if it were approved or not?
Uh, if we're approved for converting to lower level, I don't believe so. I, I'm not sure if it did go through TRC in the past for the change. I think it just probably went through a change of use, maybe.
Yeah, and then, uh, anything above a two-family is, um, is the International Building Code. I don't, I don't know if there's a specific criteria where you have a limousine service and a residential use underneath it.
Be mixed use, so it would be considered a commercial property, correct? The, the living space within the unit would be required to follow the residential building code. But as far as separations go, and the structure as its, as its own structure is considered commercial.
Does that help with your understanding, Mr. Trip?
So, uh, so having to have two parking spaces, would that be, uh, applicable for the residential?
It would. And there was a recent legislation, as kind of previously mentioned, that I think it's one and a half parking spaces per unit, no more than, so.
All right.
All set?
For now.
All right, good enough. All right. Uh, anything else, Mr. Swinarzki?
No, the only one thing I would add, um, because I, I thought maybe I inferred a concern. There can also be a sort of a sunset on a variance where if that use is abandoned for a year, that the variance can lapse as well. That's perfectly legal. So it can put it sort of in that same category as, uh, the pre-existing uses if that was the board's prerogative. And I'd be happy with that.
Okay. Uh, any further questions from the board? All right, well, let's go to public. Uh, Mr. Preventure, we're going to go to public. I don't know if that matters to you with the technical issues we're having. But, um, at this point, we'll make a call to the public. And, uh, Attorney Swinarzki, obviously you have opportunity to rebut anything you may hear if there is such commentary made. To the public, uh, we have phone numbers for you to call in remotely. Mrs. Moore, you want to go ahead?
Is the Zoom down, Owen?
The Zoom is live. Um, we, the Zoom, people can monitor from the Zoom. We would have to, if they had comments, we would have to relay that to the board if.
Okay.
They would like to do that. Alternatively, what a suggestion would be, Mr. Chair, if there are cases where folks would like to provide input remotely, they would dial into what is listed as the, uh, the troubleshooting number.
Yep.
And we could put them on, on that speakerphone over there. I think that would be a more reliable and available access.
All right, so let's stay at the four or five number, okay?
If you are out there and you would like to call in in favor, the phone number would be 603-845-5585.
Okay, very good. Uh, anybody wish to speak in favor of this application? This would be your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one rise or gestures there, anybody in opposition to this, this would be your opportunity to speak to this, uh, application as well. opportunity to speak to this application as well. Again, seeing no one rise there.
Mr. Chair, I am able to see folks if they've indicated online, and I see none rise.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll consider that we've met the statute for public input on this matter. If there are no other comments from the applicant or from the board, we could take a motion to go into deliberation.
I'll make the motion to go into deliberation session.
All right.
Have we asked for support and opposition?
Say again?
Have we asked for
We just did.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. All set? Mr. Burgess, you were going to make a motion for deliberation?
I'm making the motion to go into deliberate obsession, yes.
Very good. Mr. Tripp, do you want to help us on that?
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Second and all in favor of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Anybody wish to lead the discussion? Mr. Dietzel, I put you on this case, right?
You did.
Okay.
Thank you. I wasn't a voting member last time this came up, but I do recall some of the issues that were addressed. And I think the main one was that they perhaps created their own hardship by purchasing this property, knowing that residential use was not permitted, and that there was sort of a feeling by the board in general that were the applicant to take steps to market the property as a commercial piece of real estate, and they were unsuccessful, that somewhere down the road, we might be willing to reconsider. One of the one of the issues might have been that a specific timeframe to take those steps wasn't specified, and so the applicant perhaps was confused as to what his responsibilities might have been. I think right now, the main issue is, as the chair has pointed out several times, is the hardship criterion. And I think due to the nature of this property, the uniqueness of this property, I think literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause unnecessary hardship. It is not a particularly attractive building for commercial use. There's no storefront. It's not visible by passersby. If you were to put a sign out front with all the other activity going on in that particular strip, I don't know if that would attract business. I do see that this property has been marketed fairly aggressively in the past several months as a commercial property, and there's been virtually no interest. And I think the reason that a viable commercial enterprise at that particular property isn't feasible is due to the uniqueness of the property. And then, so I believe that the hardship criterion is met. As for the others, the spirit of the ordinance and all of that, I think they're pretty well established, that they're met. It certainly wouldn't be the only residential building in that neighborhood, so it's satisfied for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Burgess?
I, on the other hand, still don't see a hardship. I feel that it's a commercial building and a commercial space, and they should still market it as commercial. I'm sure somewhere down the line, there is going to be a tenant. It's been there for 50 years. It's been, had tenants for 50, oh, at 50, more than 50 years, it was 1950 when it was built. So if it's been around that long, and it has tenants relatively, you know, over the team, over the years, over relative occupancy over the years, then I don't see any reason why it cannot have occupancy now. My tongue is getting twisted.
And I guess in this case, I'm looking a little more clarity. I hear that you're not seeing the hardship, but you're seeing that this could end up with a tenant eventually. Could you clarify that for the record, please?
I don't know.
Or am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
No, I don't know how to clarify it more.
Okay. So is it that you think that they will have a tenant eventually?
I think they should, will be, will get a tenant eventually, yes. There was one thing about that. They said, why? It could be, it was being, could have been used for storage, and that's still a tenant, that's occupancy by a business, or people putting their commercial
So I think you're saying that it'll have some kind of use, but not necessarily a residential use?
Correct.
I see. Okay. Very good.
I believe there is some justification in approving the variance. There's as the applicant has stated over and over again, there's a number of properties adjacent or near-adjacent that have mixed use. My concern would be that there be if we're going to allow a residential use, it seems that we should decide, is this going to be a single-family use, multiple-family use? We put some restrictions upon, you know, what type of residential use we're permitting. So
So in this case, we have, the request is specific that they're looking for a two-bedroom apartment. They provided a floor plan in that regard. I think versus the prior application, it was an ADU, which had at the time specificity under our own ordinances.
Yeah.
And likewise, a studio apartment, it has specific criteria to it versus a one-bedroom apartment. These, I'm going to look to affirmation on that from Mrs. Owen. Are you familiar? Am I on the right track there?
Yes.
Because I don't look at these every day, but I just know historically, there's those kind of definitions in our articles that are specific to what's being requested.
Yeah. Well, like I said, the problem that I see here is the 16532 doesn't speak to residential at all, which is, you know, a gaping hole in, you know, being able to monitor and enforce, you know, the approved residential property that the variance would do. So like I said, I am leaning toward approving for the variance if we can make sure that it's properly enforced.
And by properly enforced, how do you mean?
Well, we'd have to have something in the approval that says I see.
You had spoken to perhaps the building code earlier. Do you mean in that regard?
Or say it's a I don't know. Would the request right now is for a two-bedroom dwelling? Would that trigger some type of enforcement and monitoring?
Nothing beyond what we've talked about already, but I think you can use that as a condition, that it must remain as a two-bedroom apartment.
Yeah.
Or it can't be more than that.
Do you mean, could it accumulate more than two bedrooms?
I would, I'm not a code enforcement expert, but it would seem that if you have a single-family dwelling or a single apartment, there are some conditions that are triggered. Like, you have to have, you know, one and a half parking spots or two parking spots, you know, so would that condition be are there other conditions that fall within, you know, the realm of an apartment that
So let me help out here. I think Mr. Tripp's looking for all the aspects pertaining to this unit as a residential unit. In this case, one and a half parking spots, egress windows, proper doors, proper size of rooms. Am I on the right track, Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Yep.
All of those can be met in this square footage of space. It's a layout that we would have to review to make sure that it, you know, meets the regulations.
So that would cover in our motion sheet, which is all, subject to obtaining all permits and inspections, that would encompass all of those building code aspects, including the parking requirements, and perhaps those that have been given relief from the governor in the last month.
All right. If that's the situation, that it's been, you know, it will be monitored, inspected, you know, then I'll say that I am willing to approve the residential use of the property.
Mrs. Moore?
I I'm still stuck on spirit of the ordinance. I know that it has been stated that there are multiple residential use houses, and I know that's not what we ever go on, but if you're just using Crystal Ave, there's more without than there is with. And then to add to the with, it would be going against the spirit of the ordinance. And all the other ones, they don't have a variance, they're non-conforming. So as soon as they're no longer habitable, they're going to also not have residential.
And for myself, you know, it's, this is kind of a really odd spot. The attorney makes the point about unnecessary hardship and preventing incompatible uses from colliding. And certainly, if you had a chemical plant that was making, I don't know.
Chemicals?
Yeah, chemicals, right. I'm trying to think of a chemical that would be fitting here.
Fentanyl.
Fentanyl, right. If you were making fentanyl, would you want a residential? You're going to get me in trouble, I can tell. Would you want a residence in this case? Those are incompatible uses for sure, or industrial use that's making xylene, which is a chemical, right? You wouldn't want to put a residence underneath that. And those are perhaps extreme examples. And so in this regard, you have to say, well, in some senses, you have two uses that one is restricted, one is not. Are they truly incompatible? So you can make that argument. And in Mr. Dietzel's commentary, he talks about the use of getting proper use out of this lower unit versus looking at the parcel as a whole. His definition, apparently, in excessive versus reasonable, is that this applicant should be able to use the upstairs and downstairs versus they purchased this property, knowing it would be a limousine service, and that should be enough. So those are the philosophies that I'm hearing in the discussions. But the one that gets lost is the intent of the town's ordinances in the master plan. And as this road, Crystal Ave, was once a cart path, turned pavement, and somebody decided to throw a house on it, there used to be other ice cream places there. I remember when I was a child in the 60s, going down to some of those. Perhaps you two, Mr. Burgess, you were around this area. Mr. Tripp, I know, was of the age, but he was in Ohio or serving our country elsewhere.
He was busy.
He was busy, yeah. And so eventually, the town's anticipation is what you see evolving in, on the same strip. You see buildings that were once commercial, perhaps a Pizza Hut, taking a long innovative drive to what it is now, which is another bank. And likewise, you have other, another convenience store that's spread out franchises or other satellite locations throughout the state that's taken the place of Wendy's. So my point is that you always see this transition of commercial activity along this strip starting to develop. And so the question is not, does this property not get to use its intended use, which is currently operating with some commercial capacity? But does this property have the right to have that commercial use? And then somebody says, yeah, but now I want to add this because it's in other places around this, even though those are non-conforming, and those spots may start to transition, much like the bank, the Wendy's that is no longer there, the Pizza Hut that's no longer there. That strip continues to become a commercial strip, which is the intent of the town, which is the intent of the master plan, and why this use has been eliminated. And in that desire of the town, you have to say, is there a hardship that is preventing these folks from using the property in its intention as the town's master plan and as the town's zoning ordinances are directing? It's not about, well, we can, they could put a sign out there for a business rental, but it wouldn't get the use because it still is getting that commercial use. So that's kind of a narrative to what I'm hearing, cross-conversation. I won't dominate, nor will I prevent anybody else from giving feedback here, but that's kind of the synopsis of what I'm hearing in all the discussions. And I still haven't quite been satisfied with the hardship, though I respect the argument that Attorney Swanarsky has presented. I digress.
No.
Mr. Burgess?
I'm
All set?
I said what I said, I guess.
Okay. Mr. Dietzel, anything else?
No, but I see your point, and I certainly understand the master plan and the way things have changed in time, but I think this property is unique.
Thank you. Okay. Any other commentary from Mr. Tripp or Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't remember your first name.
Carrie.
Carrie. Kelly.
Carrie.
You had mentioned that the the properties that are, do have residential, that should it not be used for a year, that that use would be forfeit?
If it's a single-family residence, and it's abandoned for a year or more, then right now, it's considered pre-existing, non-conforming because of the zoning district, general commercial. So yes, to answer your question, if it then wants to continue to be residential, it would need to seek a variance.
So so abandoned is a fancy way of saying not used as
Not used, not occupied, correct.
Discontinued.
Yes. So I think if we were to approve the variance request, is there a way we could put that in the subject to?
Can certainly do that. There is also, yeah, we can reference the article for non-conformity.
Yeah, because if we're going to make it fair to allow it, since the other ones have residential use, I think we should also make it restrictive that should it not be used in that fashion, that the variance is
So the only way that you would know this, Mr. Tripp, is if the property were sold. You wouldn't see You wouldn't see if 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 this were being rented and
Yes.
Somebody, and it was probably more difficult than this, were to vacate the property
Yep.
for 12 months and not live in it, you wouldn't know it unless the property changed hands or certainly the the owner would not call downtown and say, hey, we've we haven't anybody here in 12 months and one day, and so we're going to abandon that use.
So how would you know that the use has been abandoned? Residential use on the other properties?
Just as.
Coincidence.
Coincidence?
I think a lot, from what I've seen, have been lost when houses have been foreclosed on.
I think.
Or sold.
Usually when it's brought to our attention.
May I say that I think that we're going far afield on something that is not an issue, really?
Yeah, and I and I try to, you know, we try to make sure commentary is is accepted from everybody. I I don't mean to overstep code enforcement, but I think coincidence is accurate, understanding staffing levels and whatnot that we have in in town. Mr. Tripp, if you wanted to put a sunset clause on this, which Mr. Swanarsky has indicated he would find acceptable, which is that as soon as these folks were to sell this property and move the limousine service to another location, one that can handle twice as many limousines as it does now, this use would be abandoned.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, I think that's where you were going with this.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any commentary? Let's structure the motion. We have the subject to obtaining all state town permits and inspections as part of the motion. Mr. Tripp would like to add a sunset clause to this, that residential use to be abandoned.
On sale the building?
To be eliminated when a property is sold.
Okay.
I think historically, what we find with this kind of thing, especially with this, is the amount of times that people have come in and they've purchased a property and it has, you know, an illegal apartment in it. And we've had many such cases, and they purchased it because the real estate agent advertised it as having a two-family. But the real estate agent never knew that this was part of the that the abandonment issue or that it was an illegal apartment. And so someone ends up buying it, and then they decide they want to renovate the apartment. They go get a permit, they come down to see Ms. Owen to pull a permit to remodel that apartment. And Ms. Owen says, that doesn't have an apartment, and it's a single-family residence. And then somebody says, yes, but the realtor told me when I bought it. And this happens quite a bit.
It seems the buyers have certain expectations that may not be.
Well, and I and I don't want to keep dragging this out as.
Mr. Chair, couldn't we make it a condition that the variance be recorded at the registry of deeds?
We can do that, if that is the wish.
Well, that would mean that when they do the title search prior to the sale, then it would be there.
All right, so residential use to be abandoned when the property is sold. And number three, condition number two, to be recorded with the registry of deeds. All right, anybody else have any other conditions they'd like to put on this? You have that, Mrs. Moore?
Can you give me the third one?
Condition number two, to be recorded with the registry of deeds.
Number three.
I'm sorry, mister.
Isn't that number three?
I vote three, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other conditions?
Recorded with registry of deeds.
Yep, very good. So if there's nothing else, we can take a motion, come out of deliberation.
Make the motion to come on deliberative session.
Very good. Mr. Burgess has that motion, Mr. Tripp has the second. All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Mrs. Moore, you have a motion to read.
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-118 for Tapier Properties LLC to grant a variance to the terms of Article 6, Section 165-32.1.a of the Town of Derry zoning ordinance to allow the installation of a two-bedroom dwelling unit in the basement floor of the existing building. Parcel ID 32028, zoned GC, as presented with the following conditions. We have three: one, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections; two, residential use to be abandoned once property is sold; and three, recorded with registry of deeds. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Very good. That puts the motion on the floor. Let's go to defining a fact. Case number 25-118, Tapier Properties. The board found that the application is for a two-bedroom apartment. The application is in the general commercial district. The applicant filed for variance for an ADU prior in February 2025, which was denied. The applicant did request a rehearing, which was denied. The application is for the property that currently operates as a limousine service, and the property formerly operated as a restaurant. Any additions or amendments to the finding of fact?
No.
Any gestures there? Let's see, all in favor of moving this for votes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Dietzel?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
No, I don't think it is in the spirit of the ordinance or in the public interest. And I don't see any hardship.
Good. Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Moore?
Chair, I also vote no because I feel the spirit of the ordinance is not being observed and for everything else that I have stated.
Very good. The chair votes no as well. I understand the argument, however, I do see a use. This property is not being prevented from being used in the intention that the town stipulates. And I therefore I don't see the hardship in this. I also don't agree that substantial justice would be met, as there is no injustice where the property can be utilized as its intentions for the to meet the ordinances. Mr. Swanarsky, obviously, you know, anybody agreed by this has the 30 days to appeal and ask this board for a rehearing after that recourse be superior court. All righty, sorry for the technical difficulties and the excessive delay in the evening. Okay, appreciate you coming in, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have less than an hour left. We have probably will be lucky to get two cases in. Are you here for, Mark? Are you here for a debate or any particular reason? Okay. All right, next up is Josh Joshua Hawley, which is 25-119.
That's it, yeah, this is the shed.
And good evening to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we ask, you're looking for a variance for a shed, correct?
Yes.
All right, so we ask that you read the application in and send.
As you have written it.
Okay.
For the record, okay? The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because it will replace the current shed in a state of disrepair. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because it will give storage space to clean up the yard and look professional. Substantial justice is done because there is no loss to any individual, just a new slightly larger building, more easy on the eyes. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished because if anything, the values are enhanced by a brand-new structure. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because there is no room anywhere else on the property in order to build anything. The proposed use is a reasonable one because it is reasonable to seek extra storage in a house with limited storage. If the sub, if the criterion subparagraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and a variance therefore is necessary to enable reasonable uses of it. The house doesn't have a basement and has a limited attic, so I really don't have too much space to for anything, so.
Is this property a a four-season?
Yes.
Home? It is, okay. It's up on pylons?
No, it's on foundation.
Okay, all right. Frost walls, but that's it?
Yes.
Got it, okay. I know I have the deed here. How long you been there? Three years?
Hundred by seventy-five.
No, six years, right?
It's like a hundred by seventy-five, the property.
Yeah, no, how long have you been there?
Oh, I've been there since 2019.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Six years, got it, all right. Any questions from the board?
So this is just a replacement?
Yeah, it's going to be a little bit bigger than the current one that I have, but it's basically just going to go an extra four feet.
The existing shed is, doesn't meet the setback requirements?
No. The exa, I don't know if the existing one had a variance before, it's probably been there for so long that it was on there when I bought the property, so.
All right, thank you.
Do you have, is there a stockade fence or something like that?
Yeah, so the property's kind of weird because the there used to be another lane in the neighborhood that went in between me and the neighbor that just built a new house.
Yep.
But since he he owns the land behind that and in that, so it's I think that took out that lot that that would have been to access, so it's kind of there's a fence that goes right down the middle of where that lane would be.
Okay. Are you going right up against the the property line?
Yeah, that's where the old one. It's kind of like in the, right in the corner there.
You do have the letter from Mr. Cahill for this one.
I do see that. That's the one I was going to read earlier for somebody else.
Yep.
Are you leaving any service space for to the back of this at all, or any reason you can't between the fence and the?
I could, I could bring it back in a foot or two, that wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions from anyone? And Mr. Dragani, I asked that you sit on this case for us?
Yes, I was just looking through it really quick.
Any questions at all?
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, very good. Give me one more second.
This shed is going to be in the exact same space as the others, it the other shed above the fence?
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be four feet either way, bigger. But in the in the same, it's, yeah.
Excuse me.
Basically, just a little bit bigger replacement.
So you're going to leave, there is going to be room between the fence and the shed itself?
Yeah.
Okay, how much you got there?
Well, between the fence and the back.
Fence either side, side and the front, or the side mostly?
On the side, it's, on the side, the fence is probably five feet from the side of the shed, but that kind of splits that
Okay.
right away, so there'll still be that five feet from that fence. But that's pretty much right to the edge of my property.
You know, the thing is, you know, the fire department needs room to get into and if something were to happen.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
So there's at least some room back there. And you're just basically from there, you're going out a little further this way and a little longer.
Yeah, just a little bit more space in there.
Basically, another shed.
Yeah, yeah, I need to get all my tools off my screen porch.
I know what you mean. With all the stuff I have, it's still neat room.
So with the expansion that you're going to do, how far is it going to be from your original house?
If I come back a little bit further off that back fence? Let's see. I think I had about 10 feet to the house.
From what you're going to have?
What I was, what I was originally going to do, yeah. It might, it might be bigger than that.
You don't have a drawing of the location of the shed on the property, then?
I just have like the aerial view from the town website.
But that doesn't show where the property lines are.
Sorry for the distraction. Mr. Dragani, you all set?
Yeah, let me answer my question.
Mr. Obimba, anything from you?
No questions.
Mr. Dietzel, anything from you?
All set, Mr. Chair.
All right, so.
I have a question.
Mrs. Moore, I'm sorry.
It's more for, I think, Ms. Owen. The parcel ID number, is that correct? It says 19013, but I, it might be 19031. I just don't want to use the incorrect one, sorry.
It reminds you, 19031, it says over here.
His application says 13, but.
That one does say 19013.
The motion says.
And the motion says the 13 as well.
I had the same question.
I found it first.
So you think it's 31?
You ask it first.
You think it's 31, not 13?
Yeah, this one, yeah.
This one says 31. And that one says 13.
You think it's 31?
Dyslexic.
Yeah, it is 31 according to.
Perfect, so I'm going to change the motion.
The motion is right. Change that.
Thank you for catching that.
I thought that earlier, I forgot about it.
Okay. All right, any other questions from anyone? Mr. Hawley, you all set? You all set? You have anything else to add to us?
No, that's.
Okay. I think one of the things we're looking at is to be able to have you pull that off that back fence a foot or two?
Yeah.
Okay, can you do two feet?
Yeah, I can do two feet.
All right, we're going to note that on the motion?
Make it easier to cite it.
Got it.
No closer than two feet.
Yeah, yep.
On all of them or just the one?
Well, because he's, you've got you're staying in the existing footprint. We have a diagram that's shown, right, where your your new shed's going to go.
Yes.
And it's, and it's showing the the direction of the size increase, which is that your image, the satellite image you you provided? It shows an eight by 12 notes on it.
Uh, yeah, I drew that in with a.
So I I see the gap between, I guess it would be the side of the shed to the, to a fence or structure there.
Yes.
You're going to keep that in that approximate location, correct?
Yeah.
And so the other one, we want you to pull that off that fence two feet.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good enough, okay. What are you, this? I don't want to bar of trouble, so I think we have a understanding here. But you have enough understanding with that, Ms. Owen? Where we're going with that, all right, good enough. Okay. You have nothing else, Mr. Hawley?
No.
All right, and we have a supporting letter from, as Mrs. Moore points out, from Mr. Cahill at 28 Colette's Grove Road. He supports and is speaking in favor of Mr. Hawley's shed, want that for the record. Ms. Peoples, you'd have that? Uh, Ms. Peoples, you'd have that, um, memorandum in the file, I imagine? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, um, let's take a call to public then, and, uh, Ms. Owen, do you have anything else for us?
Nothing that hasn't been previously stated.
Okay, very good, thank you. Let's take a call to public, uh, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application, this would be your opportunity to do so. Uh, likewise, any opposition to the application, this would be your time to do so. Uh, we're having some technical difficulties this evening. Mrs. Moran will read your phone number for you if you wish to chime in.
Six zero three eight four five 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 eight five.
Alright, that number is, uh, in the event anybody remotely would like to call in and, uh, be heard on this matter, uh, that would be the phone number to call in for. Uh, I don't see Mr. Preventure around. So, I don't hear the phone ringing.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much.
To go into deliberative.
Um, well, let's, we'll, uh, consider that we have officially noted all, uh, butters, uh, opportunity to speak on this. Now I'll take that motion to go into deliberation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll take that motion.
Mr. Burgess has a second on that. All in favor of deliberation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so we, I, I have no issue with this. I can see this is another constrained lot, uh, of space and, uh, Mr. uh, Holly is looking to be able to, um, store his, uh, stuff, uh, personal possessions adequately. And as his testimony suggests, it'll give him an opportunity to clean up his property. Not that I know there's any issues there, I'm just taking his word for it. And, uh, uh, we have the one condition, the, uh, subject to state and town permits and inspections. And condition number two, uh, the shed to be two feet from the back, the back of, back of the shed to be two feet from the lot line.
Uh, is it, I thought the lot, the shed was on the lot line?
We're making a condition to the motion that it needs to be two feet from the lot line.
From the side and rear?
From the back. Uh, we've already noted that the shed is going to be placed in similar footprint and code enforcement understands that. Okay? All set?
All set.
Mr. Dragani, you have anything?
No, I agree.
Very good, okay. Um, let's take a motion to come back out of deliberative, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Um, Mr. Burgess has the motion, Mr. Dragani has a second. All in favor of coming out of deliberation, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Hearing none, uh, um, Mrs. Moran, um, you're, uh, you have a motion to read.
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number two five dash one one nine for Joshua Holly to grant a variance to the terms of Article Six, Section One, six five dash four eight dot B dot four of the Town of Derry zoning ordinance to replace an existing shed with a new twelve foot by sixteen foot shed less than fifteen feet from the side and rear property lines. Parcel ID one nine zero three one, zoned LDR as presented with the following conditions. We have two. One, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections. Two, the back of the shed is to be two feet or more from the back and rear lot line. And that concludes the reading of the motion. I need a second.
I'll second it.
That, uh, puts the motion on the floor for consideration. And, uh, let me read into the rector, record the finding of fact, uh, Joshua Holly, case number twenty-five dash one nineteen. Uh, the board found that the application is to replace a shed with a larger shed. The application is in the low-density residential district. The current shed is within the setbacks of the property. And, uh, the the board also includes all facts found in the meeting minutes for this application incorporates all meeting minutes into its finding of facts and decisions. Uh, any amendments to the finding of fact? Any no gestures, all in favor of moving this for a vote, say aye?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Dragani?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Moran?
Cherry vote, yes.
Uh, the chair will make that unanimous as well. Congratulations, Mr. Holly. Uh, you've been approved, uh, for your shed. Anybody agreed by this has thirty days to ask this board for a review, uh, after that recourse to be to third, uh, superior court.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good night.
Alright, next case is twenty-five dash one twenty. Um, after this, we have the Shaughnessy Allard case, that'll be you gentlemen. I don't know that we're gonna get you in, uh, if you'd like, we'll table, table you to the next meeting, which is in August. Um, you can stick it out for thirty-five minutes if you'd like, but I'm not hopeful we'll get through your case. Alright, so if you'd like, we'll dismiss you for the evening and we'll see you back in August. The date's certain to be announced, alright? Uh, I'm likely right now, we're on summer schedule, so schedule for August twentieth?
Twenty-first?
Just so you know, alright? Yeah, alright, I take a motion to, um, table, uh, or table the next meeting, case number twenty-five dash one twenty-one and twenty-five dash one twenty-two to the, uh, next meeting, uh, scheduled meeting. Could I have a motion for the movement on that, please?
I'll make motion two. I'll second it.
So moved by Mr. Burgess, seconded by Mr. Tripp, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we'll see you gentlemen next month, alright? Uh, is dairy plumbing and heating here?
He left.
Did they, oh, he did?
He did leave, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's two.
Alright, um.
Put that on hold anyway, just to say.
We, we do have an email, uh, we'll come right back to you gentlemen, I'm just house cleaning here. Uh, email from, uh, Brian Germain, Attorney Germain on, uh, TBL Birch LLC. He asked for that to be, uh, tabled to the next scheduled meeting. Could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion to move that to the next session.
Mr. Burgess moves the question.
I'll second it.
Mr. Tripp seconds, all in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Uh, lastly, case number twenty-five dash one twenty-four is dairy plumbing and heating. Uh, owner seventy-one Birch Street LLC. Um, we'll, uh, though he, there's a protocol issue here, um, I'd like to table that to the next meeting. Uh, could I have a motion for that, please?
I'll make the.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp.
I'll second it.
Burgess seconds it, all in favor of tabling case number twenty, twenty-five dash one twenty-four to August, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Alright, we clean that up. Gentlemen, uh, you have the floor. We do ask that you read the application in its entirety. I know you've been here with us many times before, we've missed you, so welcome back.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Doug McGuire, I'm with the Dubay Group. And here also with me at the podium is David Barca, the owner of the property. I'll get right into reading my, uh, my application. So the applicant is respectfully requesting the zoning board of adjustment consider two variances to permit a proposed three-unit townhouse building located at Seventeen South Avenue. The existing site currently has twelve units contained within four residential buildings. The proposal would replace one building containing one unit and replace it with the three-unit townhouse building, bringing the total site unit count to fourteen residential units. The subject site is located in the traditional business overlay district which permits a unit density of up to forty-six units on the property. The two requested variances are detailed below. The first is a variance from Section one sixty-five dash forty-nine point B, point one point B of your ordinance. The TB, the TBO district prohibits residential uses below the second floor of a building and therefore a variance is requested to permit a residential townhouse which has primary access and a garage on the first floor. The variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the existing parcel is entirely multifamily residential. There are no commercial uses on the property. The proposed townhouses would be in kind with the rest of the residential development on site and in appropriate use and therefore not contrary to the public interest. Spirit of the ordinance is observed. The intent of the ordinance in this case is to provide flexibility of residential housing in majority commercial areas while still preserving the storefront aspect of the area, particularly in the central business district. This property is already entirely residential in use and therefore the request is not removing viable commercial uses but merely enhancing an existing residential property. Substantial justice is done. The location of the property is not conducive to a mixed-use tenancy as the entire site is existing residential. The owner would have great difficult, difficulty in attracting and maintaining a small commercial tenant which would be the only one small use in a residential community. Many of the surrounding properties in the vicinity are also residential in use and not mixed use. Values of surrounding properties are not diminished. The proposal for townhouses in an existing townhouse development are complementary and the new construction would likely have a positive effect on surrounding property values. The hardship argument, uh, for the purposes of the sub-paragraph unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. As discussed, the purpose of the ordinance provision in this case is to promote mixed-use properties allowing for commercial buildings with first-floor storefronts to have residential units on the upper floors. This provision is not appropriate when applying to this property as the site is already entirely developed as residential townhouses. The proposed use is a reasonable one. The proposed townhouses will be similar in look and style to the existing townhouses within the, the development as well as other surrounding townhouse communities in the area. The use is not only reasonable but appropriate based on the existing site conditions. The second variance from Section one six five dash four nine dot C dot four dot A. Uh, the TBOD district has a front yard depth of zero feet and therefore a variance is requested to permit a residential townhouse building approximately six to twelve feet off the front lot line which closely matches the existing building proximity to the lot line. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because on this site it would not be appropriate to place the building on the front property line due to the proximity of the existing South Avenue roadway. There is no sidewalk buffer and doing so could increase potential for an accident which would be contrary to the public interest. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the intent of the ordinance in this case is to provide uniform building facades, particularly in the town's central business, business district. The property is not in this area and the proposed building placement is in line with existing buildings on site. Substantial justice is done, allowing the building to be placed in a similar location to the existing structure. It proposes to replace, provides aesthetic continuity on the property and buffer to the existing South Avenue roadway. Values of surrounding properties are not diminished. The proposed townhouse structure will be situated in a similar location on the property as the existing structure. It will be similar in style to the other townhouses on the property providing cohesive residential development which will have no adverse impact to surrounding property values. And, uh, with regards to hardship in utilizing the prong, the no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property. As discussed, the purpose of the ordinance provision in this case would be to provide uniform building facade preserving the historic character of particularly the central business district. This property, based on its location, is not conducive to a zero setback as the South Avenue roadway is close to the property line with no sidewalk buffer. Res, the proposed use would be reasonable. The proposed setback is reasonable as it matches the existing building setback on the property and allows for some buffer from South Avenue. So that's the, uh, criteria, uh, of the application. Um, I'm happy to pull up, uh, the graphics that I provided the board. We have an existing conditions, uh, and a proposed conditions. If there's any questions regarding how the, how it situates on the property. Um, I don't know if you can pull those up for me? I do have a thumb drive too, if, if, if needed.
Something's up here.
I know you guys have typical copies in your packets, but.
Ms. Peoples?
Those come on.
Is it at the bottom? It's in the ZDA folder?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember if I have these in here or not.
It might be the plant, one of those plan ones? Nope, not that one.
Just allow.
It should be the middle one, this case one.
That one?
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
That it?
That's it, upside down, but.
Upside down.
Get that rotated.
There you go.
Alright.
So just for context purposes, this is the existing conditions of the site. This is a full survey plan, so it's not conceptual or anything like that. Uh, you can see that we have currently four buildings on the property. The one in question that we're looking to upgrade and replace is that one in the lower right-hand corner. Uh, that's currently a single-family home. It doesn't match necessarily the townhouse style, uh, of the remainder of the development. The intent would be to replace that footprint with three townhouses with garage under access and those would be, you know, matching to the similar facades and everything of the other units in the property. So if you want to go to that second page, what I did is, I kind of, and on this, in this view, uh, at least on the screen, it's a little washed out, but the, the idea was to kind of fade everything back just to show you what is proposed. And so what you can see is those are the three townhouse units that we're proposing. We're holding the same setbacks as the current building to South Avenue. Uh, not coming any closer and we are maintaining the, the required five-foot side setback per the ordinance. And you can see that we have, um, two or, or, well, two parking spaces per unit at a minimum, uh, because we have a, a garage space and we have a parking space, a full parking space in front of those units. Um, we did make notation, just I'm sure these, you know, these questions come up. Uh, obviously from a density perspective, under the, the, uh, TBO district, we are well under the density allowed, where you're, we're allowed close to forty-seven units, we're proposing now fourteen. Um, and we do meet our parking requirements of the entire property. The property would require twenty-eight parking spaces and we are going to have, uh, thirty spaces provided with this proposal. So, um, with that, I'll turn it back to the board and happy to answer any questions that you may have on the application.
Uh, Mr. Obimba, would you sit on this, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Um, so you are utilizing the same, uh, footprint area?
Yeah, yes, correct. I mean, obviously the overall footprint is slightly larger, but we're encroaching in a conforming direction uh, and not a, a non-conforming direction.
And why is it that you're tearing down or want to raise that other building?
Well, I think it's from what we under, what we understand is it's, it's at a point where it needs to be significantly renovated and, um, sometimes renovation costs can end up causing, um, you know, more trouble tha, as you get into things. It is an old structure. And again, it doesn't, he's done, David's done a good job, I think, of trying to make it conform into the development, but it is kind of the most non-conforming piece because you have residential townhouse structures throughout and this is just a, kind of a single family that is still part of the development. And, you know, has like decks and stuff that are different than your, your other structures. So we thought that in the idea of looking to make modification to the building maybe bring in, uh, a fresh design that would still conform with the development and.
Is that a concrete or a masonry, uh, foundation?
It's, it's a, um, a block foundation.
So what's the value of this house, this structure? Do we have an assessed value?
I haven't considered that. It's, um, it's an older house with, you know, the rooms are poorly configured, you know, small rooms, small closets. Um, you know. You know, there isn't a good flow of living space. The foundations are questionable for me to, you know, spend considerable amounts of money fixing it. I've been advised just to tear it down and start fresh and build some units that conform to what I already have.
Some communities would look at needing at least 50% value or greater to, in order to do such a venture. We don't have that, but do you think you have? I mean, if you look at the assessed value of it, which I have no idea what it is, do you have 50% of that value here to justify tearing this down?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I think, I mean, I guess, obviously, there's costs associated with new construction and tearing down the old structure. We are, you know, obviously gaining two additional residential units in doing so. So I think the value added of bringing in a fairly similar size, I mean, if you were going to renovate that structure and, you know, take it from inside out, this structure, although three units, is only about 30% larger overall in footprint. So I think the thought is, is that it certainly justifies the new construction. I mean, I think if it was a one-for-one replacement, it would not, but being that it can accommodate a standard townhouse structure of three units versus the one miscombobulated current unit, it seems to make sense.
Well, I guess the point is, you know, if the property, if the building is assessed at $300,000 or $250,000, let's say just $250,000, right? You're looking at $112,000 or something like that of damage that you have to replace to rebuild what's there or make it right. And what you're doing, where I'm going with this is that you're asking for some extensive relief from the zoning ordinances and in order to rebuild something here, let, you know, let's face it, you're implementing other pieces into this property, other residential units other than, you're increasing the amount of residential units on this parcel versus what's there, right?
Well...
So is there $112,000 of repairs to do to this existing structure? I guess is what I'm looking at.
I would say yes, but, I mean, you would know best, you know, based on what you have in there, but I know that you were talking about it was basically going to be an entire gut job inside internally.
It's just not, I mean, I would be happy to remodel what's there, but, you know, the foundation is questionable and the extent of work, I've just been advised to, we'd be better off just starting fresh.
Yep.
And, you know, come out, you know, ending up with some nice new buildings that, you know, conform more nicely to what's already there.
And Mr. Chair, I think I should just at least make the point that, you know, you said we were asking for some extensive variances. I mean, I think in this case, you know, the increase in density is easily under the requirement. So we're not asking for any relief of the additional unit count. So the fact that we're asking for three units versus one, I think, is a moot point because we have plenty of density capacity on the property. So we're not becoming overly dense, at least not in the terms of your ordinance. And then with regards to the two variances that we're asking for, one would require us to have a zero-foot front setback, which we could technically meet. I mean, I think we could pull that townhouse development building right to the South Ave property line. I just don't think that would be in anyone's best interest in this case, so that's why we're asking for that particular relief. And then again, the other piece of relief that we're asking for is just to merely not have a commercial use on the first floor of this structure. And I think in this case, when you look at this as an entirely residential development of townhouses, it wouldn't make sense to try to force in a commercial piece. And again, I think the intent of the regulations just don't fit this particular property, but, I mean, we're rezoned and we are what we are. So I think in that case, I guess what I'm saying is I think that under these specific circumstances, and I mean, I tried to explain that in my write-up, but I think that the two variances we're asking for are reasonable in this case and we're not looking for any type of excessive relief, I think, because as I said, I mean, one of them I think is a direct safety issue. I think we can all agree that it would probably be better not to bring that to the front property line unless you can explain to me why you think that would be better. And then, as I said, the first-floor commercial, I just don't think there's really any grounds to have that. It has logistical issues of, you know, an existing residential community. How do you incorporate that successfully? There's not really any walkable traffic on this like there is in the CBD district, so it's kind of a different factor. So those are just kind of some of the points. I think it's just important that the density piece, I don't think is necessarily a problem because there's just, this overlay provides a significant amount of density on the property.
Yeah, but understanding also, I think we gave, I know we gave relief to this parcel before and I think there's a sense of gratitude on the easements that this property had relative to the town services and I think that perhaps plays into it, but, you know, you would be restricted on trying to get that much usage as well, just because of the easements, I suspect, right? Let me rest for a minute and Mr. Burgess, go ahead.
How many rooms are in the existing building?
How many rooms?
Yeah.
Well, I would see there are, on the first floor, five rooms and a bathroom on the first floor, but they're small. That's trouble.
Is it a two-story structure?
Upstairs is, it's a finished attic, but kind of jerry-rigged, you know?
I thought it was bigger, I thought it was two stories inside.
There is a reasonably finished attic, but...
I didn't, I didn't think, I thought it was two stories besides the attic, no?
No.
Only one?
No.
Wow. Misjudged that one.
Well, it is a kind of a ranch, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. What's its current use?
It's residential.
Is it rented right now?
I'm sorry?
Is it, is it, is it a rental? Is it a rental or is it...
It's, yeah, it's been rented.
And it's part of the overall townhouse development. It is all one property and so it's just one of the 12, one of the 12 units within the residential community.
But it's a single family?
Yes.
Correct.
Mr. Obeba, any questions?
It's no questions, just we haven't seen a TBOD in a while, yeah.
Mrs. Moore, anything?
They don't currently.
Mrs. Owen, do you care, give us, shine some light on this for us?
Yes, please. As previously stated, this is an existing townhouse development. There are currently 12 townhouses located within four residential buildings and then obviously this is replacing the one single residential unit. It is in the medium-density residential zoning district as well as the traditional business overlay. And as we've previously discussed, it does permit multifamily residential, but as mixed use, where residential is not permitted on that first floor and a zero-foot front setback. The proposed three-unit townhouse, it is in keeping with the spirit of the neighborhood. There are multiple multifamily residential units along this road and then this area. It's also in the vicinity of the future Avid Court development as well, so that's coming into play. If the variances are approved, this project will require TRC and planning board approval as well, so that will, that process will continue for review. There is quite a bit of past history on this property as well. It has been at the mercy of various zoning district changes over the years, which has required different variances at different points in time. Going back to 2003 October, this was three separate parcels at that time and it did receive a variance to construct a four-unit structure, a townhouse structure, with further front setback and parking in the front of the building. And in May of 2000, at that time it was zoned as CBD. In May of 2005, it was still zoned CBD, still separate properties. It was denied a variance to combine the three lots into one, construct an additional four-unit residential unit or townhouse unit, further than a front, zero front setback and no commercial on the first floor, parking in front of the building. But then we get closer to now, in June 2014, it was changed zoning district to MHDR and it received a variance to combine 17 and 19 South Ave, which contained the current two-family residence and one of the existing multifamily dwellings. So it was limited to 11 units at that time. And then in August 2014, it changed zone, zoning districts to an MDR and it was granted a variance to consolidate 15 South Ave, which is the single residential unit into the property. So now all of them were combined as one lot. At that time, it was limited to 12 units. So again, it's gone through various zoning district changes and now is most recently MDR with TBOD.
15 South Ave was combined in what year?
15 South Ave was combined in 2014 in August.
I see, okay. And is that the building that was gutted and then rehabbed?
15 is the building in question tonight.
Yeah, no, I, oh, I see, okay.
The other one is the...
The other one was 19 and that was rehabbed.
19 was, okay. Very good, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Owen. Any questions for Ms. Owen?
Nope.
Okay, Mr. Tripp, how about you? You all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Gentlemen, have anything else to add?
I guess the only thing I would add, just because that was a great summary, I was involved with the latter portions of that. I don't think I did the very first relief, but I think, one thing I will say is that the goal has always been, and David's owned the property all the way through, is just to create a cohesive development. And so I think that was really the goal right from the beginning, you know, wanting to bring those other units into the development to create it being, well, one property feel because they were operating that way anyway. And so that's just kind of what we're continuing to try to do is just, this was kind of the final piece that didn't fully fit on the property and I think its update and replacement would be obviously the final piece in this townhouse community and that's why we're here for that tonight.
Okay. All right, well, let's make a call to the public. Anybody out there wish to speak in behalf of or oppose to this application? This would be your opportunity to do so. We'll listen to any support first. We're going to provide a phone number for anyone who's remote to chime in. Mrs. Moore, you want to help us out with that?
Yeah, if you are having technical difficulties and you would like to call in favor or oppose, the number is 603-845-5585.
Very good, thank you. So seeing no one here to rise in either support or opposition, we will consider ourselves, whereas I'm not hearing the phone ring, that we have met the standard for public input on this matter. Does anyone have any last questions? You gentlemen have any last comments at all? Take a motion, go into deliberation, please. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Have a second. Thank you, Mrs. Burgess has a second. All in favor of deliberations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or none? Anybody wish to start off here? Mr. Burgess?
I'm kind of a twixt and between on this one. We already have a single-family home here and I, I just, I don't see a hardship really.
Well, I think one of the things that I see here, I'll let you have the floor again, is that I think Mr. Maguire makes a point about making this a cohesive development that makes sense, right? And you have this one single-house residential sitting there that I don't, you know, there's a bunch of ways to phrase this, right? But you could say, well, you know, it just, it's proportionally, I've been advised to go ahead and tear this down and because the return on the investment is, you know, outweighs the loss and you also probably perhaps get a brand-new building that you get a 28-year depreciation to start over on, I suppose, you know? So, I mean, there's all kinds of financial sense to this. You know, I, sometimes I want to look at it and say, well, does your financial sense outweigh the gain to the public or the loss to the public? And in this case, I don't think it does because the conditions of the structure I see and the structure itself and how it conforms to the rest of the parcel. So I yield to you, Mr. Burgess, sorry I didn't interrupt you.
That's okay. No, it's just that that part of it, I don't really, I understand the reason why, okay? If he thinks he's going to be spending a lot of money on a property that's not going to gain him back equity, you know, a revenue stream for a long time to come, I just, we're changing one building into three. I like the part that they're going to move it off the property, front property line, which is okay with me. Again, I'm not...
All right.
I need time.
Mrs. Moore?
If they took the bottom garage and called it business space, this could be built, correct?
Say again?
So they could build this three-unit townhouse if they had a commercial space instead of the garage on the floor? So to me, it can be put there with or without because the zero feet from the property line, I completely agree it shouldn't be there. So that's not even really questionable, but he can go ahead and build a townhouse and, you know, a big open room and call it business space and from the little bit of knowledge from that area, I'm not even sure too much what could be put there. I know there's two auto parts stores and there's really not a huge calling for auto parts stores. So that's...
Dog training center?
Huh?
And a dog training center?
Right. And we just recently had, you know...
Something else too, I can't remember.
But that's my outlook on it, that it can be there one way or the other. They just want to put a garage for a car instead of a bookstore.
Mr. Burgess, back to you.
No, I just, it's, the buildings around it, the commercial buildings we're discussing with the auto parts on both sides, plus on a dog training, the other corner has another business that I don't recall.
I used to go to a lash lady down there.
Hmm?
A lash lady was down there?
Yeah.
Mr. Tripp, anything from you?
I find the request completely reasonable. I think the idea of taking a property that is a money pit out of the equation and putting three rental units in its place makes perfect sense. The idea that having to have a commercial on the ground floor, that doesn't make any sense in this development either since none of the other buildings in the development have a commercial on the ground floor. So I think it, the building as proposed fits well into the existing development.
Okay, Mr. Obeba?
I think it's a reasonable request. Doesn't necessarily change the character of the area. I think court enforcement mentioned we have a new... I think code enforcement mentioned, we have the new Abbott structures coming up, and this does not necessarily change a lot of that. I was looking at density and they're way below what we permit as ordinances, and I think that's a plus thing that they're doing. As Ms. Moore and say, they could totally build and have commercial structures to meet code and have more units to meet what the code allows, which is 46 units. They've gone for three and, you know, accounted for safety, and they could as well not do any of that, so I feel the request as presented is reasonable and meets the spirit of the ordinance, you know.
Okay.
I have one question for you.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes. Are we voting on two separate issues, or we vote them all as one? But they broke it into two separate issues.
Well, they propose this one, we can vote with them.
Okay.
I'm not hearing commentary.
That's what I had.
We can structure the motion and divide them if you'd like?
No, that's, I just asked the question.
Got it.
To see, we choose to cover it.
Okay. That being the case, I have, I've made my point on this. So with that, let's, we have the subject to obtaining state and town permits inspections, give code enforcement their typical overview of this, so let's, I'm set with structuring the motion, let's take a motion to get out deliberative, please?
I'll make the motion to get out deliberative.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp, seconds on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Can I make a time motion? It's 9:59.
Yes, you can.
I make a motion to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, well, we're going to go no more than time.
Hopefully.
Because I can't take anymore.
I'll second that motion, by the way.
All right, thank you very much, Mrs. Moore. And we're out of deliberation, so, Mrs. Moore, and you have a motion read.
I do, thank you. I make a motion on case number 25-120 for the Dubay Group Inc., owner David Barker, to grant a variance to the terms of Article 6, Section 165-49.B.1.B. and Section 165-49.C. 4.A. of the Town of Derry zoning ordinance to allow the construction of a new three-unit townhouse, replacing an existing single residential building, which will include residential use on the first floor and be located greater than zero feet from the property line. Parcel ID 30012, zoned MHDR-TBOD, as presented with the following conditions. We have one, one, subject to obtaining all state and town permits and inspections, and that concludes the reading of the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. O'Bember has a second, that puts the motion on the floor. Now, finding a fact, case number 25-120, the Dubay Group representing Mr.-
Barker.
Barker, thank you. Getting late.
Yeah.
This application is to add three townhouse units where a single-family unit currently sits. The property sits in the MDR district and the traditional overlay district. Parcel had been granted relief prior to construct other townhouse units. The variances sought are for relief on the first-floor usage and setback relief. Any addendums to the finding of fact?
No.
Any no gestures there? All in favor of moving the vote, the motion for a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
None? Mr. O'Bember?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Tripp?
I vote yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Chair, I vote yes.
Mr. Burgess?
I'm going to vote yes.
All right, the chair will make unanimous congratulations, Mr. Barker, been approved by a vote of 5 to 0. Mr. McGuire, you have 30 days for anybody who may be aggrieved by this decision to ask for rehearing after that recourse to be spirit of court. Gentlemen, congratulations, have a good evening. It's nice to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the order.
Yep. All right, next up, minutes, I need approval for minutes for May 22nd.
I make a motion to approve them as submitted or presented.
Very good, thank you. I'll have a second, please. Thank you, all in favor of that motion for the minutes on May 22nd, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to table the minutes for 65-2025 and 619-2025. Motion for that tabling, please?
I'll make the motion to table it.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or none? All right, we have a busy night coming up the next night, we already have four, as I understand, Ms. Owen has told me, and for the next meeting scheduled, plus-
We don't need that negativity.
Plus three that we've got from tonight, right?
The spillage from tonight, yep. Okay. All right, any other business? Any no gestures? All right, we'll take adjournment. Mr. Burgess, you want to help me?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Very good, thank you. I have a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Burge, Tripp has a second, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, have a good evening, everybody.